Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet as a town council. We pray for the ability to discern and be able to take the information that we receive and be able to prosper our town. We're grateful for the blessings that we enjoy and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
All right, so today is the 10th day of April and we have our regular custom town council meeting. And we want to recognize our media, Corey McCartham of County 32. And we have some delegations, so we will have Sergeant Sein Semenjak and his partner in crime.
Do we want to approve the agenda first?
Yeah, just give me a second. And we have Ms. Shelley Ann Dennis for Carstens Victim Services. And we have Mr. Todd Oren for CIBC Wood Gunney, our investments. And Mr. George Allen is not here but will be there to present the audit for the town. So we just need to look at the agenda and Councilor Barnes, you wanted to...
Yeah, I want to add and make sure where you want me to put it.
Maybe you want to put it on 7 E.
Yeah, I want to add on there, discuss the flag policy and make a recommendation. Or I'm prepared to make a motion, but...
Okay, all right, I'll put it there for you. Okay, so with this amendment, can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Thank you, Councilor Barnes, are in favor? Thank you. All right, our delegation.
Good evening.
Well, good to see you and good to have your report for us, for the RCMP.
I think I've met most of the councillors other than maybe the Council of Courts. So my name's Corporal Ryan Hodge, so I'm in charge of operations at the detachment here.
And we just want to ask you, Councilor Barnes, read this away.
So just reporting on the first quarter of 2018. Overall, crime trends are down. When we look at our persons offenses, there's a pretty significant decrease from 24 last quarter to 14 this quarter. Property offenses are still pretty much the same with only a decrease of about five calls per service there. Other criminal code is up, but we discussed this before quite often. This is stuff that's reflected through fail-to-appear in court, things like that. So that number fluctuates, but isn't necessarily a representation of anything happening in the community as far as crime. Drugs were up in this quarter. That's nothing really trending, it's just we had a couple of good investigations and those were noted for that quarter. Provincial statutes, other than traffic, we are up about 50 calls per service during this quarter from last quarter. Provincial traffic is also up, so there's more tickets being written, more complaints coming in for that. Criminal code traffic is pretty much unchanged, one less file from last quarter to this quarter. And collisions dropped about 11 from last quarter to this quarter.
Good, thank you. And I noticed that regarding the drugs, there was definitely a successful file that was dealt with a couple of weeks ago or so.
We've had a couple of successful investigations now with significant seizures of drugs. And that's in cooperation with the Blood Tribe Police Service as well.
And that's a good thing, thank you.
That's a good thing for all of us.
Good cooperative work. It always helps the community when those elements are in front of Main Street. So thank you so much. Now, I know that council may have questions, councilors, do you have questions from the...
This is maybe a tongue-in-cheek question. Was the phase of the moon a problem today when we had all these fights downtown?
It was a busy day today, I agree. Very busy.
What was the problem?
You know, it might be a little spring fever, there's definitely some money out, so people have money to spend on intoxicants, things like that.
That's what it was. There was a lot of people on the street that looked pretty hammered.
Yeah.
All right, any other question? Well, it seems to me that council has recognized that there are improvements in certain areas and so that's always a good sign for us all. So thank you for all your work, much appreciated.
Thank you, proud of us.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Shelley Ann Dennis will be speaking to us about the Carstens Victim Services and there will be a request for financial support, understand?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so my understanding is you'd like to know a little bit of background of the victim services. So they, my understanding is, they have tried to get victim services in the town here for a number of years, 10-plus years. And the person that was doing it was doing it volunteer without funds from Solicitor General or anywhere else and it was not successful. Solicitor General has a grant that they give, 80% of that grant is for wages for a program manager so that it doesn't fall through, that's the main reason. And we're expected to ask and fundraise in other different ways for victims of tragedy, more so than crime, because there is that portion for crime. They will not find tragedy, so that's what we're asking for help with as we have occasional tragedy and...
Okay, so when you talk about tragedy, you would think fire, deaths, multiple deaths in a family?
Anything that is in the crime, suicides can be if they're not related to any tragedy. If it was someone hitting a dealer and they had, you know, lost their vehicle, their money to their loved ones, some end up in a hospital somewhere else and they have no transportation, there's lots of types of tragedies.
So what does Victim Services do?
So we are a crisis support. We work in partnership with the RCMP and Solicitor General is our fundraising base. And the RCMP will give us files of any type of crime, not just crime, they know of tragedy as well. And they, we're on a call-out basis, we have volunteers who are trained, so the dollars we're asking is to help with the training as well. So they are trained, they are crisis workers, and this is the only type of crisis work, immediate crisis work in all of Alberta. There is no other, the rest or an after.
Can you give me a little bit of a sense of the geographical areas that you cover?
We cover exactly what the RCMP covers. We only go to the McGrath because there's another RCMP detachment there, so we cover all the geographical areas that the RCMP...
So is there a Victim Services under Blood Tribe?
There is, but we don't, we, that's their area. We don't, our RCMP will work in partnership with the Blood Tribe and we would as well help them if they needed help, but we don't go to their area.
So the jurisdiction is really the same as RCMP?
Yeah.
Is there a paid person here now that does this?
Yes.
Is that you? Okay.
Yeah, I've been here for eight months.
Okay. And it's a full-time job?
It is, it isn't a full-time job.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
So are you, are you then, what's your title then, you're the program manager? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Councilor, so?
Can you give us a sense of the volume of files that you're dealing with?
Well, for, as we're fairly new, it's a little more accurate from January, February, and March of this year. Two hours spent per month are 93 hours for, say, August last year, and that's exactly when I started, so that was more setting up the program, getting pamphlets and packages September 2017, that was our fires, so that took a bit of time. So there was 146 hours total that encompasses direct assistance to victims, administration and meetings, training and travel.
At Wanawarleton, fire happened?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember the services coming to our town, bringing us some bottled water.
Yeah, we were...
Remember that.
Mountain View, we went all the way.
Yeah, very much remember that. Councilor Coe?
Just clarification, so your wage comes from a different source, right?
Yes, from Solicitor General.
Okay, so what you're looking for here is just ways of training staff, basically?
Training staff and helping victims who are, where it's more tragedy, right?
But it's victims of tragedy, not crime, that you're asking for funding for, is that right?
Ah, yes. And? It could be both, but the majority would be from tragedy because we don't get funds for that.
Okay, so do you also, have you also asked the county?
Yes.
Okay, so you passed the county and now you're asking again?
Yes.
The villages also.
Pardon?
The villages?
Yes, and the villages. It's, this isn't new, this, I have done this job for seven years in a different community and I worked also for four years after that in another community. And this, if you, you are welcome to research and call any other community and this is not a new thing. All communities ask for this, I just didn't ask right away because I wasn't set up enough. I wanted to make sure I had things pretty solid before I, you know, asked for them.
You've told us about the hours expended, you tell us about the nature of these, I'm not asking specifics about people, I'm asking, well, what are you dealing with?
For example, fire.
So the tragedy piece would be fire, like, there's, I can't think of...
Would accidents fit in like...
Yes, absolutely.
So have you had people come to you?
When there is no accused or...
Okay.
So have you had people come to you?
Oh, yes, yes, we have. We've just made do with what we have and we can spread out and other people have donated.
So let's, just walk me through that. So let's say my husband gets taken at work, he gets killed at work, so then that's not a crime, so then that's...
Well, to start with, that is, it's unknown.
Right.
So we go in the intent that...
So the police call you?
Yes.
Then you call me directly?
Yes, absolutely.
And then what happens?
All direct contact with victims.
So you get a hold of me and then what happens?
And we support you all the way through, whether it be through the court process, through emotional, we have all the, we help with any information. There are packages out there for people who, financial benefit package, a request for restitution, there are different funds out there.
Are you counseling me?
We're not counseling. We send the counselors, we have all of the numbers, we have all the information.
You can hook us up with...
So we are an information base other than the onsite crisis interventions.
How many else do you...
So right now we have two fully, we also have to be security cleared to be in the RCMP buildings, so that's, that's a big piece of it. We have two security cleared and trained and I have three more waiting in security clearance.
Do you have an office somewhere or do you work...
In the RCMP, our office is inside the RCMP.
Okay, okay.
So that's the portion that they have, they provide us with all, pretty much, office operating.
So you are, since you are a nonprofit, you're allowed to ask for casino?
Well, yeah, yes, I think it's through that route. We have to be fully functioning for a year and have a running bank account for a year before you can apply for a casino and then you can apply after a year, but then you're on a two-year waiting list.
That's right. So in your letter you talk about a $2 per capita, is that a one-time request?
No, it isn't.
So you're asking us to be ongoing?
Support and funding.
So you're asking us to be ongoing?
Yeah, and I'm willing to come and report, you know, monthly, semi, annually, whatever you think you need.
I mean, to give you an idea, every time we give money to an organization that is, especially as you would imagine recurring yearly reoccurrence, we like to see the, really the financial of that organization to understand how the money...
Is being dispersed. Yes, we're...
It's normally what we require as principle of transparency and accountability because taxpayer money...
Of course. Well, like I said, we're fairly announced, we don't have any money, but when we are up and running fast, we're willing to give you a financial budget for a outlook of where we spent the funds and what type of things. Eventually, things, eventually these type of money, so say next year after we get going a bit, we will be bringing in presentations that are more needed in the community or that are of interest for the community, like we can bring internet-type things to the schools, we can, I just haven't, haven't delved into that yet because I don't have funds to do it. But I, in my previous detachments, I've had plenty of presentations at the school, presentations for elderly, and that's where we go yearly is where, after, you know, because after you have people on staff that are fully trained, then you need to put your resources into, back into the community.
So can I ask you another question? Since you deal with money, do you have some, some person that does the accounting for you?
Yeah, we do, Vatness Accounting.
Vatness.
Yeah, Vatness. I, I do a monthly budget and then him and I go through it monthly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand, thank you. So are there any other questions for Ms. Dennis?
So in Alberta, how many communities?
All Victim Services are, unless they are municipal-based, which means a city type, we have 126 and Kerston is the last.
What's recently called?
Last, it is actually the last RCMP detachment to get a victim services.
So in all of Alberta, every single...
One has had one except Kerston.
That is working, functioning?
Have been for years.
Okay, and Kerston hasn't had one because...
It never really worked.
It's never really worked. I don't know the dynamics of it, do you know the dynamics? I don't actually know the dynamics, I just have had plenty of experience applied for the job and I haven't really heard, I just know that they had tried for a number of years and I guess no one had moved around.
To give you a sense, I come from B.C. and in B.C. we do have all sorts of services and I had the privilege to have those services given to me and allow you to even help you with impact statements and stuff like that to go through. So it's quite, it's quite a good support for people, it's an emotional support when you're going through a miserable time. So I would say there is value in an organization like that for people who are victim of whatever it is, because when you're victimized, it feels pretty bad.
Yeah, for sure. So could we ask the police, since the police are here, what their perspective is on this?
The other one who asked what operation.
Sorry, just, she's in your building, I'm just, do you find that, you've been all over, I know you've served in other places and obviously they've had victim services there, is it important to you?
Very important, takes a lot of the workload off of our officers, brings huge support to our victims, whether it's victims of crime or it's victims of tragedy. It's somebody who can stay after the police have left and help out, somebody who can provide that support and reference to community support. This community badly needs it. There is good support here, but there's some people that feel they don't have support, so it's where Victim Services can hopefully step in and be that bridge for them.
And there's no funding through the RCMP for this, other than giving her room and board essentially?
Yeah, Solicitor General runs the program, writes grants to the program.
Okay, so there are grants that you can...
80%.
Which is what you've got. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Sing non, thank you very much, council will look at your request and let you know the decision. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Owen, if you'd like to come and help us with the investment aspect of our town?
Jim, what did I hit that was not correct? Can you get me on the right track here? Now I'm making letters on the screen. I don't know how I did that, but there we go, I'll go turn these things.
So how do I, just click...
Yeah.
Then there's a label on there too, if you need it.
Okay, excellent. So should I be it?
Yeah, you're up. Well, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today, it is a pleasure. I've worked with the town since 2004. My predecessor was the gentleman that originally opened the account for the town in 1983, so you've been a client of ours for a long, long time. And we've been through it all together, ups and downs, very good markets, obviously interest rates have changed a long time since we first started investing in 1983. And the products that we buy have also changed a little bit. But a little bit of background on me, I did grow up in the province, I grew up on an acreage just south of Okeechobee, so I'm relatively a local boy. I've had one job, I, in university, I got a summer student position with Wood Gunney and I've had that job my entire career, I turned 40 this year, so I like to think that's rare and it's a good thing, they treated me well. But I'm not biased to my firm and my firm hates when I say the CIBC absolutely deplores this. My job is to my clients, so my, basically, I'm out there to try to find you the best bonds and the best investments that we can find. I can't do that if I'm loyal to one firm, because all firms, you know, all banks issue bonds, and so I have to be able, to be able to get those and get access to other products that aren't CIBC. I'm unbiased, I'm barely agnostic when it comes to bonds, we buy bonds from anybody and I have the ability to purchase things from Royal Bank, from TD, from Bank of Nova Scotia, in fact, I can get them usually on a new issue before their own advisors can. We have the size that can do that now. So basically, my point being is that, you know, I do run an unbiased book, you are in good hands and despite the factor with Wood Gunney, your investments are basically spread around the street. So what I'm here to do today is to kind of give you a, from the trenches view of the economy, kind of what's happening out there. I want to make sense of what's going on, how I'm managing your money through the turbulent times we've seen, and kind of just what's going on out there. So I'm gonna go through a little bit, I don't want to make this very high level, I want you to understand what I'm talking about, I want this to be sort of home cooking, so jump in at any point you have questions. Talking a little bit about Alberta, we've obviously had a bit of a rebound, I mean, 2006 in January, just a couple of years ago, the price of oil collapsed and with that, the Canadian economy, or as particularly the Alberta economy, you can see back in 2006, our real GDP went from three points, or went down 3.7%. Now, we had a bounce back in 2017 and it's expected to continue in 2018 as well. In fact, we're leading the provinces in year-over-year growth, in nominal GDP growth, but that's a misleading number. Alberta's really not the fastest-growing province, we're still getting out of the hole and in fact, when you take the last three years and you average it out, we're about a year and a half behind the other provinces. So that's a misleading number, we're still digging out of the hole and that's gonna take us some time to get there. But things are on the rise and unemployment is back to levels that are back, you know, within a sort of a national scale. We were in Calgary, I think, at one point, we had double-digit unemployment at some point, so that's certainly turned around and it's nice to see. We have bookended economy though, we've got strength in B.C., we've got strength in Ontario and not a lot of strength elsewhere. And it's interesting, B.C.'s got a couple of engines that have driven this strength that we don't have. One of them is, obviously, they have a huge film and television business that is dictated largely by the Canadian dollar. And when the Canadian dollar is in that 70 cent range, it's very attractive to make films in Vancouver. It's a big business and it drives a lot of their economic, their GDP. They've also got a massive housing bubble and that's driven a lot of economic activity as well. If you look at Ontario, they've got a couple of jobs that we don't have as well, one of them is also a housing bubble and they've had that for a couple of years. The other one is, they're manufacturing heartbeat. Ontario basically makes everything that we sell to the United States and so when the dollar is in that 75 cent range, it looks pretty attractive and the manufacturers are selling. So they've both had these things that we don't have here in Alberta that have kept them buoyant with the fact that commodity prices have really hurt us, so that's been the difference. Let me go back a little bit here. Now, this is interesting, Canada last year had a pretty good rebound and you know, about a month, a month and a half ago, Prime Minister Trujo was touting in Zurich, Switzerland, at the World Economic Forum that Canada had the best growth in the G7. Well, again, that's a pretty misleading number, it's because we had the best year-over-year growth and we were coming from a pretty big hole, so it was a little bit misleading. But our growth was decent last year, in fact, it came back to about, you know, about a 2% range. The point I'm making here is I think it's starting to peter out. We think that growth is probably about as good as you're gonna get. I don't think it's gonna get a lot worse, I'm not here to be a naysayer or a doomsayer, but I don't, I don't see the catalyst in the next couple of years that are gonna get us out of what we call this 2% growth mud. We've been stuck in this 2% growth mud for close to 10 years and I don't see a catalyst that's gonna get us out of it, so I don't think we're gonna, you know, get markedly improved from here, which comes back to something I'm gonna talk about later, is interest rates. Now, interest rates in Canada, they've obviously come up, last year, we seen something that we haven't dealt with in over 10 years. We were in the first, it's the first time that interest rates have come up in sort of a, a longer-term secular move in 10 years, we haven't dealt with this in a decade. So it was a little unusual when interest rates came up, a lot of instruments didn't do very well last year and one of them was bonds. But as you can see, we forecasted that rates are relatively flat, now that we've seen that increase, things should continue to come up a little bit here in the next year or so to what we feel is more normal. We're not at normal levels, these are extremely, these are well below normal levels, so just getting back to that normal, but once we're there, I don't think you're gonna see rates go, you know, back to the 4%, 5% that we had back in 2007. And the reason being is that that's so far to go from this point, the level of indebtedness that Canadians have, Bank of Canada knows that they're walking a pretty fine line, if they raise rates very quickly, they're likely to put the economy into a recession very quickly and they know this. So I think it's gonna be a pretty slow go. And in fact, I think the Bank of Canada kind of let their cards out a little a few weeks ago when they basically said that the economy is slowing down, they basically pointed out what I just mentioned, that the bank is not gonna raise rates as fast as they were last year. So I think the market has the fact that they think rates are coming up wrong. Now, the Canadian dollar, I don't want you worrying about what I have on the screen, I'm gonna give you a very easy synopsis on how we look at the dollar. We actually think the Bank of Canada has goalposts, one's at 70 cents, the other's at 80 cents, and the Bank of Canada prefers our dollar between those two goalposts. When it gets up to 80, they get a little uncomfortable, it's too expensive. Our exporters, our manufacturers, they get a little bit too pricey, they're uncompetitive when it gets in that range, so the Bank of Canada, they start talking about cutting rates and that brings the dollar down. But when it's at around 70 cents, they also get a little nervous, it's too low, in fact, it gets too uncompetitive, in fact, we're, our dollar's not, we, when we import everything and our dollar's for 70 cents, it's costing us a lot more, so there's a drag. They don't like it that low either, they really like it right in the middle, around 75 cents. And I think you're gonna see these goalposts maintained for the next couple of years. And every time you see it's around 80, the Bank of Canada's gonna cool off, they'll talk about rate hikes. And when we're around 70, you're gonna see them do the, the exact opposite. And I think you're gonna see them try to maintain that range. The reason being, Bank of Canada's struggling right now. They've got a, their, their gun, that is our, their economic stimulus gun, has two bullets left in it. They've got two rate cut, uh, two rate cuts in that gun, and they're at zero. When we get to zero, what does the Bank of Canada do if we get into trouble? They can't cut rates anymore. They don't wanna do that. They don't wanna shoot those last two bullets. They're gonna try to keep the dollar in a competitive range to try to keep Canada sort of buoyant while the economy is kind of stagnant in this 2% mud. So they're gonna do their, their darndest to try to keep the dollar fairly attractive. NAFTA. Um, this, I gotta tell you, this is noise. I want you to completely ignore what you see on a day-to-day. I told clients last January that we would probably be, uh, talking about NAFTA next January and here, you know, next January came along, and I told clients this January, it may be another year that we're talking about this thing. There's nobody in the chair on the other side that we're even negotiating with right now. That person's been a, you know, that's been a revolving door. There's been three people in that chair. There's nobody right now that we're negotiating with. Now, they're talking about how, um, it could be really ugly for Canada, and Trump's gonna tear down the walls. Well, I'll tell you, there's a little bit of a secret. The United States don't have a problem with Canada. The real issue is with the Mexicans. They run a massive, massive trade deficit with the Mexicans. It's a big deal. They do not run a trade deficit with Canada. In fact, they run a trade surplus. And when you look at it, and you really break it down, there's only three countries that are partying to this agreement. So we're gonna get thrown into this fire. They're gonna try to renegotiate with, with Mexico. We're gonna get thrown into the mix. But I don't think it's gonna be very ugly when, when the dust settles. And in fact, I think it's probably a moot point. And I think what we see today, and all this volatility and the worry about what's gonna happen to NAFTA, I chalk up to noise. It's absolute noise, and I don't think it's gonna mean anything. The areas that, you know, Trump's really going after, like soft lumber and dairy, um, you know, soft lumber is, uh, less than 1% of Canadian GDP. Very small piece of the pie. So, yeah, there may be some damage in those areas, but overall, we're gonna be okay. And I don't think this is a big deal. So let's, I, I don't, I don't worry about this. I don't want you to worry about this either. I'm gonna briefly talk about oil, because it's obviously important for us in Alberta. There, there's two things to this equation, supply and demand. Now, supply, the real deal that everybody knows, the United States is sitting on 100 years' worth of gas trapped in shale. They've always known about. They could just never get it out of the ground. And technology's come a long way. In fact, they can get it out of the ground now, and they can do it for about 50 bucks a barrel, right? But give or take, break even. Well, that massive supply flooded the market a couple of years ago, and obviously places like North Dakota coming on stream as a big producer pushed the prices down to where we saw in 2006, at the record low. We were just producing more of this stuff than we had, than, than we were using. It's never been a demand issue, though. I'll tell you what, worldwide, forget all the talk about, you know, conserving energy and Tesla, you know, cars, that, electronic car, all that. We are using as much oil as we ever have. Last quarter was a worldwide record. So we are so on this stuff, it's not a demand issue, or it's, it's a supply issue. Supply is starting to come back into line a little bit. It's taken us a couple of years, but it's starting to get back to the point where the market's testing out higher and higher ranges. And we're back around 65 bucks. We think the stars are aligning. There's a chance this year that we could see, uh, a shortage in crude for a, a small window, and you could see a spike to the 70s again. I don't think that the days of 80 and 90 bucks are gone. I don't think we're gonna see those again. I really don't. Uh, if we do, fantastic. Uh, but we could see 70, which, I'll tell you, is pretty good. And the companies in Calgary, they spent a couple of years trying to make money at 50 bucks, so their costs have all come way down. They can make money at 70 bucks again, so we'd be all right. And if the stars do align, I'll tell you, that'll be a big win for the NDP government and the budget that they just released, because it'll fix a lot of that. Now, I don't know if that'll happen, but the chances are there. So we think that there's possibility that we could have a bit of a silver lining with that. U.S. econ, uh, the U.S. economy, now, this is the big thing. This is what's keeping us out of trouble. Forget about Donald Trump. I, you know, I, I told clients before the election last year, I, I was asked, you know, who do you think's gonna win? Well, you know, if Trump wins, is it gonna be bad? Well, I didn't care. And the reason I didn't care is not because I, I tried to make a non-political statement. Um, we are, whoever, you know, has that four-year window where they're driving that bus, they can't really dictate where that bus is going. It's already, you know, it's already driving down the road. The road that they're traveling right now is being driven by the millennials. What's driving this U.S. economy is the millennials. Millennials are 25 to 35-year-old kids. That whole generation, let's go back 10 years ago. The oldest of those kids now is, were 25. They were just getting out of university. And 10 years ago, 2007, 2008, was the top, was the crash, was the top of the market. So those kids that just got out of school and got a job, had for about a year, and then they lost the job, and every year after that, those kids graduated, they couldn't get work. That whole generation lived in their parents' basement long after they should've. The average, they were, you know, a lot of these kids were working at Starbucks as baristas, you know, making 12 bucks an hour, paying off their student loan, living downstairs. So that whole generation didn't take hold like they should've. But we can, we can see in the numbers, these kids are going back to work, and these kids are buying their first homes, and they're filling the homes as well. That generation is finally taking hold and pushing the economy like it should've 10 years ago. They've been a little late to the game, but that's what's driving this economy. It has nothing to do with Trump, it has nothing to do with Hillary Clinton, and I don't care what he does, that's what's driving the bus. And that's a trend that has 10 years left to go. It's a very long-term secular trend, one that we think is gonna be around for a long time. That's what we're, you know, hanging our hat on, and that's gonna keep us out of trouble. So the, the underlying U.S. economy is actually in pretty good shape, believe it or not. Um, this is kind of interesting, and I, I don't want to get into too much economics, but believe it or not, one of the most sustainable things that you can see in an economy that tells me that it's really legit is when wages start to go up. So when you get that unemployment rate falls to the point where, I'll, I'll actually point out on the very top, so you get the, when the unemployment rate drops to the point where you get that squeeze where it's hard to find good work, well, wages start to go up. That's where the U.S. is at right now. That is a, that's a key. That's telling me that's a sustainable, this is a sustainable economy. This is legit. That doesn't happen in blips that last for a year or two. This thing has legs to go a few more years. So this is a, that's a big deal. That, that's what keeps me sleeping at night. Now, if I were on a deserted island and my life depended on predicting the economy, I would bring this chart. It's the yield curve. All it does is predict the, it, it just shows me, it doesn't predict anything. It just shows me the value of, of U.S. government treasuries, of all maturities, of what they're paying today, you know, from one year all the way up to 30-year government bonds. So the blue is U.S., the red is Canada. But the shape of this curve has predicted every recession in the last 60 years. About 12 months before it's happened, it's bang on. The shape of this curve right now is predicting the next 12 months, we are seeing growth on both sides of the border. There is no recession in the cards. So I don't think things are getting worse. And what you're seeing right now is volatility. It's probably long overdue for the market, to be honest with you. We, we were probably due for something like this. Um, but it's not a game changer. I think the economy's actually in decent shape, and you will see a comeback here. When we go through periods where, you know, let's look back, when you first opened your account in 1983, we were buying government bonds when they were 15%. We're buying government bonds today at 1. We don't own government bonds anymore. In fact, that's the one major change that you've seen. You almost exclusively used to own government of Canada debt. Now, you own debt that's issued by the five Canadian banks. And the reason being, they're the best-paying bonds that we can buy within that little box that is the municipal government act. Now, there's one thing I want to point out. I run your account, and I've always run your account, to a higher degree of accountability and security than that of the MJ that, uh, that you're actually allowed. You're allowed to buy corporate bonds. I will never buy a corporate bond in this account, never. Um, I've seen the best of corporations go bankrupt. It happens all the time. And that's not something I'm gonna have in your account. This is tax money. So at the end of the day, I like to sleep at night, I think you do too. We buy stuff that's boring, in a good way. But once we're within that box, that box that we're allowed to buy in, well, yeah, we get aggressive. We like to trade for opportunity, and we try to make the best we can. But the opportunities are fairly limited. Look at where interest rates are now. I guess the point of this chart is that now that we've come down this 30-year, sort of 40-year cycle where we've, you know, rates are falling, that's a long-term secular trend that doesn't exactly reverse overnight. In fact, usually, the law averages tells us there's probably a five, 10, even a 15-year period of sideways movement before the next trend resumes. I think we're down here at these low levels for a while, so we've gotta get used to making money with bonds earning 3%. Now, I want you to know, this is something that's, it's, I'm actually in the process of, uh, believe it or not, writing a book on this. It's, uh, a book that no one will read, it's on bonds, but, uh, the point, you know, there's a lot of misnomers out there. The belief is that bonds are terrible to own when interest rates are rising. Well, here are the four periods that I can pull out that are the worst four periods in the history in the last 50 years of interest rates going up. So at the beginning of the period, then with the end of the period, what the percentage change was from the central bank. And if I go back to the next chart, in three of these four periods, in fact, two of them, long bonds did better than, than short bonds. One of them did the same, and in fact, only one of them, only one of them did the long bonds actually underperform. And the reason being, that one was, the interest rates actually went from just under 4% to 8 in less than a year, or sorry, just a little bit over a year. That's the fastest rate hike cycle we've ever, ever seen. That's unbelievable. That would suffocate anything. So in only one of those scenarios did bonds actually not do that well. And the reason being, bonds are considered the smartest market out there. They see things from 12 months out, and that's going back to that yield curve. Bonds seen the fact that interest rates were coming up, and they've already got this priced in. Now, we had something happen last year that we haven't had happen in 10 years. Interest rates came up. And it sparked, it spooked the market a little bit, and we didn't make much money on our bonds. But the nice thing, and the thing that again, keeps me sleeping at night, if you buy a 5%, or sorry, if you buy a five-year bond that pays us 3% a year, and last year we didn't make 3%, we still get it. It just goes, it gets pushed to the latter years. And now we know that we're gonna have a year where we make five, because we've gotta make it back, and we're guaranteed to get that. So I'm not worried about our bonds. And in fact, last year, this is getting to your portfolio, and I'll come back to this in a second, I know that's hard to see, I apologize. We had the worst rate of return you've ever had. We made half a percent last year. Your average rate of return since 1995, which is actually as far back as our system goes, but you're in account since 1983, was close to six. So we haven't changed our strategy, we haven't changed our bonds. What happened last year? Well, it's that we had interest rates come up for the first time in 10 years. We had something happen that we haven't experienced in a decade. And, and it did spook the market, and bonds had a pretty tough year. But I'm not worried about it. Doing nothing, we will have a much, much better year, just as I mentioned, because these are fully guaranteed bonds. In hindsight, because hindsight's always 2020, if we could've gone back and done anything different, we could've. The window of, of what you can buy, all of those investments did, had pretty tough years last year. This is where we are, but we will always make sure that rain or shine, we've got investments that, when we buy them, when you purchase these bonds, they've got a guaranteed rate of return. And we can't get anything less than that. So getting back to your account, you can see that we've got investments, that we built a very short ladder. None of your investments mature over seven years long. In fact, we've got it usually equally spread from about one to seven years. We don't own long-term bonds anymore. You don't have 15-year bonds like you used to. Uh, we own short-term bonds. And if interest rates start to come up very quickly, I'm gonna shorten that ladder even more. We'll go one to three years. But you can also notice that we own stuff from Bank of Montreal, CIBC, TD, Bank of Nova Scotia, National Bank. I am agnostic when it comes to where your money is. I have to find you the best rate. That's just, that's my job. And I have to do it, uh, without losing a penny. So your account's in good shape. We didn't have a great year last year, but I'm not gonna touch it, and we're gonna have a much better year, just based on how this was made. I've done a lot of talking here, I apologize. Any questions at all?
No apology necessary. Helped me a lot, yeah.
Questions at all? Counselor, sir, you want to talk about your TD? Okay, no questions? Well, thank you very much. It was a very good presentation. It gave us a, a very clear understanding of where the economy is going and the trends that you portrayed there. It was very interesting and actually gave us hope.
Your English, your account's not, you know, even in the most turbulent of times, your money's built to be boring, so don't worry about it.
It's all right. Take a boring at.
Boring is good when it's safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks, Todd.
All right, counsel, at this point, I want to make a little bit of a change in the agenda. Because we're going to have a presentation by our auditor and then by our finance department, we need to deal with the reserves that are under 7C5. So we need to have a motion to allocate the reserve account amount in a specific account. Maybe there is, uh, the wording for the motion somewhere?
It's in the request for decision under that item.
Okay, so if somebody can find the...
What is it you're looking for?
7C5. There's a...
Reserve amount?
Yeah, so under the history portion, there's the motion, the recommendation that was made in CCW. We were talking earlier about how that should be placed before we have the audit presentation.
Yes, counsel, sir.
In the action motion, Jeff, just says administration recommends the ratification recommendation for CCW. Yeah, so just go up. Right, but...
So it will be counsel recommend that?
So we did this already?
Right.
We haven't actually made a motion to direct administration to do it?
So essentially, we need that motion in place before we, we...
I understand all that, I just wanna know what you want me to say.
Yeah.
I mean, when I say, I'll say it, we'll wave our hands and we'll move on. So we'll, we'll put your name where it says Mayor Cronin, you just say the rest after that. Okay. Okay, we recommend to Council that the 2017 surplus be reserved in the department that the surplus was incurred.
That's right.
We make that work.
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Questions? Thank you. Questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Josh has come, we're a little ahead of schedule, and I told him we had till six. So if you want to jump into 6B and C, we can probably get a few of those things done till he gets there.
So 6B is a bylaw 1667, business license by law. There is a small amendment that has been placed in the, in the wording of the definition of a peace officer, it seems to be.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and so what we need to do is first of all, to have a motion to approve the amendment, and next, to approve the, so, is somebody willing to--
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to bylaw--
1667?
1667, the business license by law, yes.
All right, thank you. So all in favor? Thank you very much. So we had done first reading, so what we need to do now is do a motion for second reading. Councilor Self?
I'll move second reading of bylaw 1667.
Okay, so, question? Sign none, all in favor? Thank you very much. We could at this time move to have a third reading, it's up to you. It does not change anything for the people in town.
I move to allow a third reading.
Don't move to allow, just move up there.
Pardon me? Just move up, yeah, I move. We have final reading on--
Oh, bylaw 1667?
Yeah, bylaw 1667.
And it's called business license by law?
Yep.
Okay, questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so this one is approved, we will now--
Go ahead, finish your pump there.
No, go ahead.
I jumped it forward to 6B, but we didn't approve the minutes. So we can jump back and do that quick, too, Mayor.
Okay, 5A. If somebody could give me a motion, can I move on? Sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March 27, 2018.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much, all right. So now we have Mr. Josh Allen, that is in the gallery and ready to give us the 2017 audit report for the Town of Carston, the corporation of the town, thank you.
So, um, my name's Josh Allen, I'm with Nairus Mackenzie Alexander, LP. And we audit the financial statements for the Town of Carston for December 1st, 2017. Basically, what my job is, is to come and examine the figures that are provided to me by the administration and perform audit procedures to ensure that the numbers that they have provided are not materially misstated. So what my procedures do is, I go and I will check for error in those, in those figures, and materiality is a concept that, is a figure that would represent an amount that a user of the financial statements would be concerned about. And my procedures are done with that in mind, so it's not 100% assurance. I don't look at every single little detail. I'm only concerned about things within that materiality level. And part of that is examining controls and looking at reasonable estimates that were made by management. And also the overall presentation of financial statements. And we came to the opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects for the financial position and the results of operations for the Town of Carston for December 31st, 2017.
All right, so if you had to give us in general a sense of the state of finances of this town, what would be your blanket statement?
There's very low debt levels and-- Car, sorry, Hawken will speak to this a little more. But the, the operations, like the, sorry, the amount that you guys receive for, for taxes and for user fees and stuff like that are sustainable in maintaining the capital.
In other, in other words, we are--
In other words--
In a healthy state of finances.
A healthy state, yeah.
Thank you. Essentially, that's what the taxpayer needs to know. We're in a healthy situation. We don't borrow tax beyond what needs to be borrowed, raising, and the tax levels are sustainable. Thank you.
Yep.
Questions for auditor?
Mayor Cronin, can I just mention something real quick? I should have prefaced probably before. So Josh has met with the Audit Committee, and we just spent an hour before this meeting, and so that's where he goes through everything in great detail. So this is very summary. Hawken's going to do a five-minute summary, and then your advisory committee is gonna have some motions to put on the table following that. So if there are more specific questions, by all means, if there's maybe some bigger pieces, we can spend some committee time, or you can come and see me, and we can go through some pieces of that statement. But yes, the purpose of today is quite, quite on a summary level, and then there'll be some recommendations coming from your committee.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, I shall also mention too, financial statements are the administration's responsibility, and my responsibility is just, again, to make sure there's assurance over the figures and different financial statements.
I'll pass it on to Hawken.
Thank you. And thank you for Hawken and for Jill to be there for the finance department, and so thank you so much.
They were very lovely.
Thank you.
Any comment on me there?
You want to--
I don't, yeah.
All right, you're looking lovely today.
Hawken, just make sure you have your sneaker on, that's great.
So, yeah, if you're looking for the financial statements, the most recent copy of the financial statements, the final copy of those financial statements are 6A in your agenda package. And I also have this. And if anyone wants a physical copy of the financial statements--
Hawken has prepared a graph for us to give us a little bit of a visual representation of where we stand in terms of financial balance.
So I thought that this, I wanted to go over this graph really quick because I think that it gives us a bird's eye picture of the five-year history of the town and where it stands now. So in this graph, you'll see there's a, there's the net financial assets line, it's the green line. You can see that five years ago, our net financial assets, which is the assets less the financial liabilities, were about three-quarters of a million dollars. And we've grown that, at the end of 2017, we were sitting at closer to three and a half million dollars. So in five years, that's quite, quite the growth in our, kind of our bottom line, our equity. You can also see the light blue line. The reserves balance for the town has grown from a little under $2 million to about three and a half million dollars. Just over three and a half million dollars in that time period as well. So we funded this growth, you can see the, the net municipal taxes, the taxes that we've collected have been flat. And also, if you look at the red line, that's your electrical, water, sewer, garbage utilities revenues. They have gone up incrementally, it works out to about an average of about 5% per year. And so we're at market levels with our utility rates and tax rates, and we've managed to grow our reserves balance and our net financial assets. So like Josh said, the, in my opinion, the finances of the town are, they look very healthy, and when you compare them to other communities of similar size, I don't think that there are that many smaller communities that have balance sheets that look as good as ours. So if anyone has any questions at any time about the financial statements, we don't wanna go through them in great detail right here, but administration is always available to sit down and go through any questions that you might have. At this point, I think what we wanted to do was just kinda give you that bird's eye picture of where the town stands at year-end. And also just reiterate that these are the audit and financial statements, and they sort of give a stamp of approval on these monthly financial reports that you get throughout the year. And just say that we are available for questions at any, any point in time. Would you like me to go over some of the variances from, from 2017?
Okay, so in the revenues and expenses, if you look at them, there are some variances, some above some, above budget, some below budget. Some of the variation were caused by grants that we have not used. Do you want maybe to explain the--
Yeah, let's just look really quickly at the balance sheet. And it's, it's page three, it's called the consolidated statement of financial position. And I'll just, I'll note a couple of the highlights from this last year. So there's the top section there titled financial assets, and--
Councilor Brown? Yeah, just--
She's right at the top.
Just taking, that's okay.
I've got it here, oh, read it on here, just need to get it read there.
We're on the same page?
Yep.
So you can see that the first line there is cash and temporary investments. And in 2016, we had close to 700,000, we're just over $300,000 at the end of 2017, so obviously our cash balance went down a little bit. However, there's also an investments line, and it went up to about 3.4 million dollars. Now, if you combine the cash and temporary investments and the investments line, both years, we're at about 3.7 million dollars. So we moved cash kind of from our bank account to Woodgundy and to GICs, we moved it around, and so at year-end, this is where it was sitting. So another bit of a change in the balances is the trade and other receivables. You can see that that went up about $300,000 to 1.5 million. And this is just mostly because of the DRP project that we have down at the Lead Creek. We've been rehabilitating there, and we've been fronting a lot of the expenses. We're going to get reimbursed for it. And so there's a receivable for that expected reimbursement. There's also a couple of other grants in there that we, same thing. We fronted the money, and they're yet to, to just forward us the funds for the grant. We have no more notes receivable balance, and that was all related to the Black Sands Agreement, which terminated at December 31st. Then down in the financial liabilities area, we, the payables kind of go up and down based on operations, it's more or less just a timing thing. Deferred revenue, we're sitting on less grant money. We had a grant in our bank accounts at the end of last year, and it was about just under $400,000. And we've cleared all that out, and so our balance is a little bit lower this year. If you look at the long-term debt, it actually went up from 816,000 to 838,000. It used to be composed solely of the downfall line, de-venture, but, and so we paid that down about $155,000 this year. But we added the solar panels on the civic center and the ice rink. That was partly funded with debt as well, a loan from NMAX. But the whole idea behind that loan was that the solar panels are close to net zero, and so the energy savings make the loan payments. So overall, maybe just a comment on debt. There's a, the MGA sets limits on how much a municipality can, can borrow. And there's a note disclosure, and there's a note in the back of the statements that tells you the exact number of our limit. It's about $12 million, so having only $800,000 in debt is, is really quite low for a municipality. And just kind of referring back to that graph that we covered at the start here, we've been able to grow our net financial assets from, it was 750,000 up to close to three and a half million dollars, while reducing our debt. You can always build your assets by borrowing money. We've built our assets while reducing our debt. And I think that's a, that's a great thing. So the next page is the income statement, and it tells the story, the final story of our operations in 2017. Maybe just a couple of highlights, there are a few variances. There's, there's a column for what we budgeted, and then there's the column in the middle, the 2017 actuals. And just to highlight a handful of those variances as well, you can see that the, the second line on the, in the revenue section is user fees and sales of goods. And there's a lot of different items that go into that one particular line, but it does contain our water, sewer, garbage, electrical. And we, we actually made about $230,000 more than we budgeted off of those items. And it was, you know, if you, if you think back, it was a very dry year, and so there was a lot more usage, and that accounted for the higher revenues there. And there's also a number of things that, and we've talked about this before when we've discussed reserves, but there are some things that we don't budget for. For example, land sales or levies. But then when we do collect them, we just reserve them. And so for that reason, we'll have zero budget, but then we might have collected, you know, $50,000, $100,000. And so then our actuals are a lot higher. However, we go ahead and tuck that away into reserves at the end of the year.
So Hawken--
Yeah?
On those reserves, do we specify where that's gonna go to? Where do we discuss it first, where, where it's needed to go first? Before we put it away? Or you just don't put it away into a reserve, general fund? Put it into a specific fund?
Yeah.
If you remember, last week, we kind of talked about it, and we said we were going to reserve them in the account that we were--
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure of that.
And that's the motion we're going to make afterwards.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, just out of curiosity, donations, what are donations? People giving money to the town?
Yeah, to be honest, I don't know off the top of my head exactly what those are.
That's very--
A thousand fifty dollars in donations.
Yeah, there's not very much, I just--
Yeah, we'll collect that for different initiatives over the year. Sometimes some trailing stuff for the pool. Yeah, we'll get a hundred dollars here.
Just donate.
Like for the Rotary Playground, there was some donation.
Okay. Yeah, there's some little ones that come in. Even we'll still get some for the reunion center on occasion, that's still trickle in.
Yeah. So for whatever reason, we break, we break out a thousand dollars in donations on the financial statements, so. Other than that, the, just a general comment, our mentality is, just because we have budgeted a certain amount, we still try to be frugal, and we don't necessarily cut a check for the entire amount we've budgeted, just because it's in budget. If we can get the job done a little bit less, we try to do that. And then, but then tag that savings for, for the purpose that it was originally intended for. Either roll it forward, spend it next year, or just stretch the money that way. And so you'll see, you'll see that in the expense section there. That was all that I was planning on touching on, unless somebody else wanted to go over some other things.
If I could just suggest, take some time and look through the notes. They're quite interesting, there's some good information there. But by all means, shoot me an email, stop in, hit me up on some of that, and we can go over it. But the, the notes really carry a lot of good information from those two statements.
Good.
There was one question that came up in our committee was the amount of increase in the salaries. You said what you were looking at, Councilor Self? You may want-- Page nine? Yeah, it was page nine, that's right.
There was a budget amount, and obviously the amount came in less, but yet in 2016, the amount was less, by about $90,000, $93,000. And if I understood correctly, the, there was no wage increase for anyone.
Yep.
So how did it go up? Yeah, how did it go up?
If you don't mind, Hawken, jump in. What I think this is, and this always moves around because we'll get things like leaves or injury. Someone goes on LTD, someone goes on WCV, someone takes a maternity leave in this case for some of the year. So it will move around, we'll budget for that wage because we obviously don't anticipate injuries and things like that. So some of it may just be where that year we had, in fact, we did have an LTD in that year, so they were off our payroll completely. Where they would go on one invisibility. So it just depends on injuries or illness and a few things like that, it can factor in.
Was there any increase in your pension? Was there any increase in your pension portion?
RAPP contributions stayed the same, but the, there is a small increase. Very small.
Yeah, just a nominal overall, yeah. I guess, Councilor Self, it has to do with that combination of leaves or injury or WCV and any combination of those things. What we'll also find too, is if we have, say, someone terminates, retires, moves, we don't get that rehired sometimes for a quarter, for three months. So there's, you know, maybe $15,000, $20,000, depending on the timing of that.
Right. I mean, I understand that we came in less than what we budgeted. It's just that the previous year, we went up, we went up about $90,000 or something. I just wondered, we didn't have any wage increases.
No, we didn't. No. Okay.
All right, thank you so much. So I will now turn the time to Peter Drew, who was the head of the committee. And for recommendation, came out of that committee to have motions to approve budget and reserves.
So do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
So first of all, I would just move that council approved the 2017 audit financial statements as presented.
Do you want the reserves listing first? I know we had it on that sheet backwards. Josh, do we want the reserves listing approved first?
Yeah, I should approve that first.
Okay, let's do that one first, Councilor.
Yes, before the closing.
Yeah, okay.
So I move that council approved the 2017 reserves list as presented.
Okay, and so that goes exactly along what we did last week. Okay, so you had that list. Question? Seeing none, are in favor? Thank you. All right, next motion?
So I also move that council approved the 2017 audit financial statements as presented.
Questions? Seeing none, are in favor? Thank you. We need to have Peter sign the document.
And Councilor Self will sign as well. All done?
Thank you very much, Hocken, and thank you very much, George, for that presentation of our financials and our audit. Thank you. We're in good hands. Thank you so much for the good work. And thank Jeff for having an administration that really look after our finances very well. Okay? We now need to move on to the next item. So we'll go to 6C. It's a draft by law 1668, Council Code of Conduct. And we just need to consider the first reading. So this is a little bit of a consolidation of all the different pieces that work here and there and everywhere into one document. So, Councilor Self, you...
Move that by law 1668, we give it first reading.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. We don't need to do second and third, that would be for further, for the councils to do that. Further council meeting. Okay. Let's go into 7A. The Electrical System Quarterly Code of Conduct Report, as you know, that is a way for us to monitor if the staff gives proper information to their people and if we have complaints come back to the town, that is what it's monitoring, as far as we know right now.
I just recognize an error, so if the motion can just have as amended. I had at the end, the report, and all reports have been reviewed and approved by the Board of Directors November 14th, 2017. That should be today's date. So if it can just say as amended, then I'll tweak that, that date and send it out. I thought I grabbed them all, but I missed that one.
Oh, on electrical?
Yeah. I have at the bottom, I have a little bit in there.
All right, okay, totally agree.
I just noticed it right now.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we need a motion to approve it with the amendment.
I'll make that motion to approve the quarterly compliance report to the town for the, is it electrical?
Yeah.
With the amendment, the following amendment, the date would be April the 10th, 2018.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, are in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so 7B, it's a time again for, to present resolutions to AUMA. I do not know if we want to stir up the pot and put in the fees for police services as AUMA intends it to be.
So we can put the mayor do that?
Do we want to, do we want to stir up the pot and divide the group? Maybe not.
There is a resolution I would find seeing somewhere on our ambulance services and the gaps in our ambulance service. I don't know how you put these things in, but again, we discussed when I was at the meeting last week. There are times in this town when we don't have ambulance coverage. There was a situation, I think I mentioned before, a few weeks ago, where the person had to be driven in, a person that overdosed, had to be driven in by private vehicle. They told them, we don't have an ambulance. To me, that's just ludicrous. Now, I don't know if we can throw something in there or get other communities to go on board with this.
Okay, if you throw something in it, I've gone through the process. The process is very long and very painful. So you have to do a full background there, which means you have to get the whole history of the ambulance service and be able to kind of recap it all. And then you have to make a motion that's sufficiently worded with whereas, 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 and wherefore. So you need at least three, three whereas and...
There must be three or four, five hundred communities doing that, because we always have that many resolutions.
So, this is something that, Jeff, we are in meeting with the four mayors on Monday.
That's Monday, correct.
And I'm wondering if you want us to bring that up and see if we could do a joint, a joint, a joint resolution to a...
At least discuss it with them.
Okay. So we will bring that up. If you can put it on the agenda, Jeff?
Sorry, I missed the topic, and I apologize for that. But it's ambulance service.
The topic is ambulance services and the gaps in the service, what service is required by lack of ambulance.
There are times when they tie out, but we just don't have a person around, or an ambulance is going to transport to death bridge or...
Yeah. Thank you. All right, so that's maybe what we can do, and then we'll see what the appetite is to put it as a resolution.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. All right, 7C, those are recommendations from CCW. So in other words, we already have discussed the item. We only need to now formalize the motion. So 7C1 is blood trab line management donation. And if you remember, we have a recommendation in place for that.
I'd like to move that we donate an 18-hole golf path with car to blood trapezoid management for KDPA Summit.
In 2018?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, the next one, Councilor Banbury is not there, but I'm sure somebody is going to be interested in it.
Councilor Banbury called me and asked me if I would make that motion.
Please. 7C2 is the airport trailer. Is a question of funding that trailer.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so with the recommendation, Council, I move that council of support, the airport purchasing the trailer, has presented up to $5,000, and that would include moving it into place. Is that right?
It had to do...
Yes. I have a GL at the bottom of that. Can you add that to your motion, please?
Yes.
At the very bottom, adding that expense. Okay, so with the inclusion of adding the general ledger account of 2-33-100 as the source of the funding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. In other words, if you remember, we said that money was reserved for painting line. We agreed with them in principle that we'll fund their airport trailer, and hopefully we'll have still some money for their line painting, but the priority was a trailer.
A little background, I think Richard talked to you, Councilor Banbury, about the, county council was going to put some funds in place to help with running the water lines and power lines to that, and something in kind. So I don't know exactly what it was.
What I saw was they had committed $2,000 for the trailer, and they would assist in the moving and the placing and everything like that. So we'll see how that all shakes out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So 7C4, it's a county letter.
There's three.
Or 7C3.
We need to vote on this motion.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, all in favor?
May I have questions first?
Oh, go ahead, that's all right.
Two questions. Has the county donated anything to this? And the second question is, will the county be taxing this like they tax the other buildings out there?
Okay, so that's an interesting one. Question one, yes, I have put some money forward.
Okay, thank you.
And 2,000 cash plus in kind.
Okay.
Second question, I do not have the answer.
Let me, I have the email here, just one second on that first part. Carson County is committed to sponsoring the Fly and Breakfast in June along with the Town of Cardston. They've also pledged up to $2,000 towards the purchase and moving the Echo trailer to the airport. The county is also committed to providing internet access at the airport with restrictions on usage and a few things like that. So to your second question, this is just my understanding, and I would stand to be corrected. Because it is not a privately owned hangar, it itself will be taxed.
All right, yeah.
So it falls outside the taxation of the private hangars, that's my understanding. The service thing, yeah. Yeah. Provide service to the airport.
All right, so 7C4, that's a county letter, just...
Need to vote on that.
We already voted.
We'll ask questions first.
He threw in the question in the middle of the vote.
Sure. I was waiting for the last question.
Hold on again to be sure.
Okay, all right. So let's vote on that again. All in favor? Thank you.
Say this one more time.
Any questions?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. Really make me.
All right. It's okay. 7C4...
You have three in there. 7C3 still.
I don't want the 7C3. 7C3, sorry. Obviously, I keep on going to four. 7C3, Cardston Trail Project. So essentially, this one was an applicable in principle. Councilor Self?
I move to support the Cardston Trail Project, phase one in principle. I also move to engage Mr. Tullman, Mr. Tully to deliver preliminary feasibility study to help council with funding for said study to be confirmed in May during the budget discussion.
Thank you.
Nice motion.
All right, we got it all.
Somebody drafted it, right?
All in favor?
Just saying, we got questions here. I got a comment here.
Yeah, ask questions.
So I talked to Councilor Self, and I presented this idea to the Southwest Group. And I talked to Jeff about it. And the Community Futures people have said that there are some fundings available. Also, the Southwest Group said that they wanted to see what we were going to discuss with the Badlands, if they're going to be in support of this. And that they are in favor of it, and they would, they just want to see what Badlands wants to do. And they probably would come forth with some of the funding, because they realize if we need startup funds, which could offset our having put this much money forward. But we will still put the money there with any of the donations coming to offset that money.
Okay, thank you for that information. Councilor Self?
Just a comment, and also a possible move forward with this. I think we realize that there's money from Albert to Southwest, also from Badlands that chambers expressed an interest. So I think we've got the motion generic enough that we know that we have money that could come out of the budget and/or from others.
I think the wording in principle gives us a chance to apply for different pockets of money. So are we good for voting? Are in favor? Thank you. It's okay. I'll take it. All right, 7...
C4.
7C4.
Here it is.
That letter. The letter has been drafted, so we will send that letter. I will sign it. Thank you so much.
You want a motion on that, Mayor?
Yeah. So, all in favor to approve the letter? By Councilor Banbury?
I'll make the motion to approve the letter of thanks to the county.
Thank you. It's well drafted, appreciate that. All in favor? 7C5. We already done it.
I already.
7D. Business arising from the delegation. All right, from a staff...
Is this where I do my thing here with the bike policy and somewhere in seven? Isn't that where we were going to go with that?
You're after this.
You're after your own...
I'm after this, okay. All right.
So is there any comment regarding Sergeant Semeniano? I would like to know about our proposal.
Yeah, just one follow-up. I talked to him just before. He's wanting to reconvene with the committee soon to formalize the goals. So he wants to prepare for those tonight, but he wants to convene soon.
Well, I appreciate that.
Any idea of...
I haven't seen a draft yet, so I expect one shortly.
It better be good.
All right, 7D2, Ms. Dennis. So this is because we now have a Cardston Victim Services. This is something that when Zane came in, he really realized that that was something that the town never had and should have had long time ago. So he worked on trying to bring that service to the town. And I gather that happened last August. Here is the problem. It doesn't come cheap, because the Solicitor General only funds 80% of the wages of the program manager, and which is Ms. Dennis, and levered up to the municipalities and villages in our cases, to come up with the differences or with additional funding for training of staff. And we heard that there are two security clear personnel at this point and trained, trained in offering services to those people who are victims of crime or victim of tragedy. And there are three more that will be trained. Those people are trained to be on the call 24/7. And the minute that the RCMP gives them the name of the families or people involved, they bring into action. And really much of the after-service from the RCMP. In other words, the RCMP will come, address the situation, but the RCMP doesn't do the compassionate aspect of the job. And that is what a victim service does. And the victim service also gives you all the information as to how to move forward and how to access all the services that you may need in time to overcome the tragedy or the difficult times that you are facing. So that is what it is, and that is what those monies are required for. I was not 100% sure how a budget of seven, about $20,000 a year, that's about what they're looking at, I would imagine between us, the county, and the villages, can really help people in a tragedy money-wise. I'm not so 100% sure that I really understood that. But I understand that if there's a person that suffers crime, the Solicitor General seems to have funding for that. But if you are a victim of a tragedy, there is... But if you are a victim of a tragedy, there is no pot of money to help you with. And they deal with both. So what they're trying to establish is a little bit of a backup funding to help those people with transportation to the hospital or whichever it might be. It can vary so dramatically. So essentially, it's two dollar per capita, doesn't come cheap. But should we have Carstens Victim Services? Personally, I would think yes. Up to you to decide. I've seen the good work, I've been a recipient of that work, so I know how much it can support a family in trouble.
I'm not against it, but this is kind of a unique community. If there's a problem or a tragedy, I'm not calling them, I've got my bishop. You know what I'm saying? That's where the first support comes from and for most people, not everybody in town, obviously. But for most people, it comes from that ecclesiastical aspect of things.
Commissioner, councillor Silk.
I don't... This is a difficult, I guess, comment, but how many of the number of recipients of victim services come from First Nations?
This is a very good question, councillor. We have seven hundred First Nations in our town and they deserve services as much as the rest of the town.
I agree.
There are many people who are not of our faith and who deserve services that are not given there either. And ecclesiastical, you're right, that would be the first thing. But I must really tell you, when we had a break-in in our home, it was pretty dramatic. It was a very welcome thing. I didn't go to our ecclesiastical people because they could not help me as to know how to deal with it with a court issue. And that is what that group was able to do for me. First of all, to offer me a way to overcome trauma. And secondly, to tell me how to do impact statements and how it would be dealt with in a court, at the court level. So all that information was given to me.
So in a sense, they are a support group.
It's a support group.
Yeah, they're not expected to fund too much.
No.
Just to help you through the steps of getting over whatever you're going through.
Right.
Okay.
I think that something that's important to remember is the fact that they do work hand in hand with the RCMP. That's a huge factor for me. The RCMP see the importance of it, that's why I asked him to speak to it. Because I felt like if they feel that there is a need in this community for this, for whoever it is that needs it, then I fully support it. I think, I mean, it's $7,000, so it's not like it's 500 bucks. But I feel like we have enough. When you're in that situation, you have enough going on. It's nice to have somebody come in and be clear thinking and be able to give you the paperwork. Or like she said, it's not counseling, that's not what they do. It's more informational, is my understanding.
For example, like in Saskatchewan, those are the type of services that are provided to the families right now.
Right, right.
And there are probably many, many...
I know the first call, I think, which is important. There, RCMP, it happens and then the first call goes to them, so...
Yeah, well, they're right there for those families.
I think it's important.
It just sounds like we're the only community that we're...
That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, so give me a sense, is...
The funding, where would the funding come, just out of general funds?
Well, it will have to be put in a budget somewhere.
Yeah, it would have to be included in the budget.
It needs to be included in the...
Because this will be a yearly thing.
Yeah. Sounds okay.
My only comment, mayor, if I may. When I look over the operational statistics report from the RCMP, the largest number is provincial statutes traffic. So am I traumatized by getting my seatbelt ticket?
No, no. The trauma comes from tragedy and comes from issues that can be break-in, could be attacked on a person, could be different things like that.
I think what councillor Silk is alluding to is that will they be busy enough? Will they be, we have that much going on in our community that we're going to need these guys?
This is why I think it's important for them to report on a regular basis. And it's important for us to have a sense of the financial. I do not want to give money just to say, "Here's a check," that's not the way I like to do things. I think there has to be accountability delivered with that money.
Don't you think it's reasonable, though, to say we're willing to fund this in principle for the year and then return and report, right? I mean, we're not locking ourselves in for ten years. We're saying, we're willing, if we are willing to fund you for this year and let's see, let's see how many calls, let's see, let's see what our $7,000 is helping with.
And for example, when we had the fire, they were there that night. There were three of them there that night. They brought us food, they brought us water and came back a couple of times during that night. Jeff, if I remember, when we had the registration at eleven o'clock, that's what they were there and they brought them off. Yes.
Again, mayor, councillor Corserate, I'm talking statistically speaking, the largest number of things that they, that the RCMP deal with are provincial offenses under the Traffic, Highway Traffic Act. So I'm not against the funding, I'm just saying...
Unless we give it a chance, we'll never know, right?
I would also recommend within this motion that they also seek other sources of funding. Like they should be establishing a group to go and get a casino pavilion lots of money.
Which, she said, they were already booking and that, but I need to be...
The motion is going to be made, it's going to be included in there so that they know...
Councillor, would you like to make that motion?
I will.
Please.
Sorry, I just have one other question. In the letter, it says that the guideline is two dollars per person. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to give them two dollars per person.
You are quite correct.
Yeah.
Just wanted to ask to, well, I was going to ask or mention what councillor Drew said, that that was their recommendation, but whether it is or not. They've approached the county, but I have no idea what the appetite from the county was. Do you want any homework done there? Would it be tied proportionately or comparable to that? We want anything considered like that? Or maybe we do a little, I could do a little homework in the meantime? I leave that to you, but I haven't asked at all, so I don't know how that went.
Here's a compromise. I'll make a recommendation that administration do some more research on this. One, to find out what the appetite is from the other communities in terms of helping to fund this. And two, that they discuss with victim services what their plan is in terms of funding going forward from other sources. So I would make that recommendation to administration before we actually make a motion.
Oh, that is wisdom and thank you so much. All right, do we have questions regarding that recommendation thing now? All in favor? Thank you, councillor. All right, so seven D, Mr. Todd Pollan. As you can see, I think the presentation was a very good presentation. Helped us understand a little bit why we didn't perform so well last year. Yes, but on our poll, it seemed to me that there was a little bit of a small silver lining at the end of the record. Okay, seven D four, Mr. Josh Allen. There is an audit, that is a clear audit. There will be a letter to management, there will be given to management with a recommendation for improvement. But talking with MP there, it didn't appear that there was anything of any grave concern.
We've already passed the motion to approve it.
So the only thing that we will do later on as a committee, the audit committee will have to reconvene in the months to come. And the contract of Mr. Allen is completed at the end of this audit. So we will have to put a request...
A little product tender, yeah.
Request for tender and move from there on, which is the normal way we do things. Okay? Now, seven E, councillor Barnes, you want to talk about the tragedy in Saskatchewan? And the ability council has to do a little something to show support.
Yeah, well, you know, I was really thinking about this and I mean, it really hit everybody. I mean, it's very emotional, I mean, with that accident in Humboldt. It's affected the whole country. And people from worldwide leaders, even from the Queen, for goodness sakes, they're all sending their condolences. And I did some research, I'm finding cities and towns and villages all over Canada are lowering their flags. And that's where my concern is. We don't have discovered this area in our flag policy.
But we do.
So I would, no, according to Jeff, we don't. So I talked to Jeff about it and so...
It's a resolution of council, that's what the...
Well, I want to, I want to make a recommendation to make one change. And I do have some wheresses. So if you're okay...
Absolutely, go ahead, councillor.
So whereas the tragic circumstances occur, there are tragic circumstances that occur on occasion. Whereas there has been a recent tragedy involving the Humboldt Broncos hockey team, whereas the current flag policy does not cover these occurrences, I move to add into the flag policy to include lowering of national, provincial and town cards and flags to half-mass to honor those victims who lost their lives in the recent and any future tragic circumstances of a similar nature. Further, I suggest that the flag be lowered ASAP and to put a notice of these events on the town electronic signboard to honor the victims.
The school division's already lowered their flags, it's always done there.
All right, so essentially, what, I think you have two distinct kind of idea in your, in your motion. One is to address the Humboldt event. The other one is to address a more wider kind of tragedy that may happen and that may affect all of Canadians. So I am wondering if in the flag policy that we have, it is reflected in the ability council has to do it?
So I talked really briefly with councillor Barnes yesterday afternoon about this. I think there's a motion to bring that flag policy up for, to be reviewed. And so we'll present some proposals for how it can be better taken care of. I have no objection to doing anything with the flags for this event at all. The only thing I would ask is a timeframe, how long? So if they go down ASAP, how long are they down?
Well, from what I've been reading, they were, most communities were going to go one day for each person involved. So that'd be fifteen days.
Just as long as we have some direction there, we're good.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table, so...
Just a question there. It's a lengthy resolution that includes an amendment to the policy.
I know.
This makes it a little cumbersome.
I'm wondering if we could split it in half.
I think Jeff could probably...
Could you maybe, councillor, could you maybe, would it be to our advantage right now to just have a motion to lower the flag?
That's fine.
For fifteen days in honoring the fifteen victims of the Humboldt tragedy?
All right, I shall move to lower the flags at this time.
All right, so we're going to...
For a period of fifteen days.
In honor of the, each of the victims?
Starting tomorrow.
Okay, so, all in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other portion will be brought back when we do the revision to that...
Yeah, so we have a motion to bring that back already.
Yes.
So we'll make sure this is considered and bring it back.
Okay, would that work for you, councillor?
And I guess Jim can make up something for the electronic...
Explaining why we're doing it for fifteen days.
Exactly, and get their team logo on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor, for your consideration. Yes.
I'd like to move to recess for a few minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
You only have your correspondence left, I don't know what your willpower is here.
Oh, I need to, I need to go.
All right, so...
So we have some food back there, too.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much.